All right, good afternoon. Welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting. We'll get started here in just a moment. Before we do, if this is your first meeting with us, run down a quick overview of how each case will be handled. We'll have staff present cases to us one by one. We'll have an opportunity to ask them questions. Before we invite the applicant up, they can share additional details if they have them. Then we'll ask them questions. After that, we will open up the public hearing. So if you're here today on one of these cases, we'll do public hearings for each of them individually. You may come forward to the mic here, state your name for the record, please, and I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less just so we can respect everyone's time and to keep things moving. After that, we'll have the applicant back up if there's things they'd like to address that were raised during the public hearing. We can ask any final questions before we discuss and make a decision before moving on to our next case. Before we get going, conflicts of interest, potential conflicts of interest, commissioners. All right, hearing done. Let's get started with our first case. Actually, I should announce the first case, 407 Pearl Street Northwest, has been withdrawn from the agenda for today. So there will not be -- that's not being tabled or rescheduled at this time. The applicant may reapply at some point, but we will not be doing a public hearing or have a presentation on that today. So just in case you were here for that, no need. So our first case will be 1145 McReynolds Ave. Northwest.
All right. Hi, commissioners. So for the first case at 1145 McReynolds Ave. Northwest, Bazani Building Company is proposing a 16-space parking lot at 1145 McReynolds and is intended to provide parking for the redevelopment occurring at 736 Leonard as well as 730 Leonard. In 2020, the Planning Commission approved a request by the applicant to establish ground-floor office use and a parking waiver for the 16 residential units and commercial space that went in at 730 Leonard. 736 Leonard, next door to 730, is in the process of a lot combination and is now proposed for renovation and development into 10 dwelling units with 800 square feet of commercial space. The construction of this surface parking lot does require special land use approval based on its location in the TN LDR Zone District. What you're looking at here is a map from the West Side Area Specific Plan, and it identifies the subject property as medium-low-density residential on its future land map, land use map, excuse me. And one unique item within this West Side Area Specific Plan is the parking hold line, which is designated along Leonard Street. And the subject property is actually located right on the edge of that holding line. And this holding line is intended to keep parking from expanding beyond a defined point into residential areas. Over time, residencies adjacent to the commercial district have been demolished, and that is to facilitate more parking. To the north of the subject property, we have mixed-use commercial along Leonard as well as the 730 and 736 buildings in association with this lot. To the east, we have Beer City Bread and a surface parking lot. To the south, we have a one- and two-family residential neighborhood. And to the west, we have a surface parking lot that serves the building here located on the corner of Alpine and Leonard. The area of the subject property is 6,720 square feet, and it is located directly south of Leonard Alley, which is south of Leonard Street, and it fronts McReynolds Ave. It is also bounded by an alleyway to the west and is immediately adjacent to one single-family home at 1139 McReynolds. I do want to thank the archival department for handing over these two photos from the 1980s of the subject property. And from this, you can see the home was built around 1880 and as well as a garage with a truck port. The assessor's records indicated that the truck port was previously located on this property but was demolished sometime between 1981 and 2003. Unfortunately, it's unknown if the truck port was established legally as we were unable to come up with documentation on that site. Rental certification for the two-family home on-site expired in 2021, whereas the house has since been vacant. And over the past 10 years, there have been a little more than a dozen enforcement issues with the subject house. Parking in this district and relative to the amount of dwelling units and commercial space would require 15 parking spaces, so the proposed parking lot would meet that requirement. Once the lot combination occurs for the site, the residents will be provided with parking tags, you know, or a parking permit for the parking lot. And then the retail spaces or commercial spaces within this unit will be provided with a space or two. I'll defer to the applicant to go into more detail about that. I did also want to mention that the city engineering staff as well as the applicant have indicated potential to develop some sort of pedestrian crosswalk to get from the site here over to where the tenant entrance is indicated on the east side of the building. Plans currently do not indicate any sort of pedestrian crosswalk, so it is something that we'd like you to consider. The parking lot screening areas between six feet and 10 feet are shown on the plan to the south of the parking lot. And the applicant has indicated intentions to add landscape buffering to the north, the west, and east boundaries of the lot. A landscape buffer on any side of a parking lot abutting a public way does require a three-foot width screen wall or five feet width of vegetation. And furthermore, a landscape buffer of 10 feet is required in side yards where the parking lot abuts residential use. So the minimum buffer itself can -- the buffer width can be reduced by one-third with the provision of a six-foot privacy fence. The applicant did indicate installing a six-foot-high solid wood fence along that border to meet that reduction requirement. So should the Planning Commission determine that the proposed land use is appropriate, the tree canopy, landscape standards, plant materials, those can all be confirmed at LUDS permitting. In terms of neighborhood outreach, the applicant has received support from the West Leonard Business Association and the West Grand Neighbors Organization. In sum, the key considerations we'd like you to consider include the demonstrated need for additional parking, the loss of residential housing stock, potential impact on surrounding residential neighborhood of the demolition of the existing house and surface lot, as well as the compatibility of proposed parking lot with the residential uses. We'd also like you to consider the adequacy of proposed landscape buffers regarding residential uses that are adjacent. And lastly, the appropriateness of installing a pedestrian crosswalk to facilitate safe and efficient circulation from the building to the parking lot. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I just have one. So we talked about the privacy fence on the southern lot line. Are the other buffers adequate for?
So the landscape buffering that they've shown here ranges in size from three feet to eight feet. So they are willing to modify that as needed during LUDS permitting.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Has there been any -- I don't know who might be able to best answer this question, but has there been any environmental research, whether it's Phase One or sampling, on that property? If there was a former car repair shop, has anything been done there that could end up with a vapor problem in the first place?
So I can't speak to the environmental impacts of the site, but the garage and the truck port itself were for storing vehicles, not for repair or servicing or auto body.
Okay. All right, thank you.
In our packet, the application does not identify the property owner, nor is the property owner signed it. So do we know that the property owner is aware of this request and in support?
I would defer that to the applicant.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, I'll have the applicant up, and they can share additional details with us.
Thank you. Couple of clarifications, although thank you very much for the detailed review. Quick comment, 730 has 18 apartments, not 16, so there's two more there. Let's see. We worked with planning on having the entrance to the parking come off of the alley rather than coming in off McReynolds and felt that that situation worked a little better in overall acknowledging that what we're establishing here is a new separation between the commercial activity and the residential side. So that we're still keeping that walkability along McReynolds. That sidewalk gets a lot of use from the residential to the south of us. The parking tags, we would do them specifically for this site, and we'll end up with 28 residential units in the building along with some retail use. So we would offer that parking to those tenants at a marginal cost. And we've done that in other projects, and it seems to work fairly well. Not everybody's going to opt for it, but if they want their own dedicated space, then they pay for it, and then they get a tag. And then we would sign it accordingly that it is private parking. And the fence, we'll certainly put the fence up along the south side, the good fence and good neighbor. And I think it makes a good transition from what is currently residential but feels more commercial. There's a lot of that site now is paved, and it gets used a lot for overflow parking from the neighborhood. And during this project, we got to know the owner, and that's how we came to the agreement of purchasing it. And Robert is here today. He'll be speaking during the public comment period.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thanks. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today about this case at 1145 McReynolds Ave. Northwest, please come forward and state your name and share your brief thoughts with us.
My name is Robert Roman. I'm the current owner of 1145 McReynolds, and I do support the project that Bazani Building Company is doing. It's good for the neighborhood and good for the business and good for Grand Rapids and all in general. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else on this case?
Hi, Barb Pickett. I just had an interesting question, well, to me. I just heard about the park green if there's a privacy fence. Is it possible, if the privacy fence did go in, that it is not on the property line, but rather that the green stuff was on the property line and the privacy fence went closer to the parking spots? That's what my question was. So that the neighborhood could have the greenery instead of having a wooden wall on the south end there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add as the applicant or if there's other questions for the applicant commissioners? Okay, then discussion on this?
Should we have someone address the question about the fence placement? I don't know if that's required to be --
Is there a natural area where that would typically be required to go?
I don't believe so. I mean, it's upon the petitioner. Is that correct, Elizabeth?
The zoning ordinance says that the required buffer can be reduced by a third with the provision of a six-foot-tall privacy fence. It doesn't say whether it needs to be at the lot line or not. The problem with not putting it at the lot line is that then the landscaping is outside the fence, and it's challenging for the applicant to maintain it. There have been occasions where that has been done, but that's, you know, I think, given the narrowness of this, I would suggest that putting the fence at the lot line might be the best alternative.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Yeah, I think that makes sense. I hadn't considered the maintenance of the property on that side of the fence, but it seemed that it would almost fall to the neighbor then to care for it. So that doesn't make a ton of sense. Any concerns about this? I guess I'll just point to the area-specific plan, and the parking hold line is a great thing that we can point to again, that this falls within that. And so it was kind of envisioned as a potential, understanding that Leonard is a busy corridor, and we want parking off the main street. So this seems appropriate to me.
Yeah, same. And I just want to say that I really appreciate that about the West Side ASP, that they have that parking hold line. I think that that was a really well-thought-out part of that plan. Yeah, it makes complete sense to me to support the development that'll be happening across the alley. I do think that it's good if the applicant works with city staff on appropriate pedestrian markings, but I don't know that I feel strongly enough to require it as a condition. How do others feel?
I think the location of the sidewalk really close to that side door is relevant.
Sure. I'm happy to make a motion if others -- Okay, great. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission approves the request of Bazani Building Co., Peter Scornia, for special land use approval to construct a new surface parking lot at 1145 McReynolds Ave. Northwest for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the project will support the parking hold line recommended by the West Side Area Specific Plan, and the project fulfills the parking requirements associated with the mixed-use development to the north proposed by the applicant. The proposed use will meet the Site Plan Review Standards of Section 5.12.08.E. because the development will be designed to meet all standards. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood adjacent properties in the natural environment because the project will provide additional parking for the mixed-use development proposed to the north by the applicant, and the proposed use will limit the need for on-street parking. Potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed use on the neighborhood and adjacent properties will be minimized through establishing adequate buffering from the public right-of-way and screening from adjacent residential uses. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses or to the public welfare because the proposed use is not anticipated to result in excessive noise, glare, or visual clutter. The proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood and impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment because appropriate site improvements have been proposed to facilitate safe and efficient pedestrian circulation and landscape buffering and parking lot screening contribute to the urban street wall. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability or economic welfare of the city because the proposed use will allow redevelopment of a vacant structure. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. Standard Condition Set A approvals, which is on the screen, but I will read since it hasn't been read yet. One, that the application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed dated and stamped by the planning director shall constitute the approved plans, except if plan elements do not meet ordinance requirements and/or as amended in this resolution. Two, that the use shall operate according to the application and per testimony as recorded in the Planning Commission minutes. Three, that this approval does not include any proposed signs and any future signs shall be subject to the requirements of Article 15 of the ordinance and permits received prior to installation. Four, that a land use development services or LUDS permit, building permit, and all other required permits be obtained from the city of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation. Five, that any expansion of the approved special land use requires an additional special land use review and approval by the Planning Commission. Six, that the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies in all state laws. And seven, that this approval shall take effect 16 calendar days after the date of the Planning Commission decision. Support.
All right, we have a motion in support. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. Our next case is 3250 and 3260 Plainfield Ave. Northeast. And Elizabeth will take us to this case.
The applicant is requesting approval for a new veterinary clinic, and veterinary clinics or animal hospitals require special land use in all of our commercial zone districts. The subject, the development site consists of two parcels, 3250 and 3260 Plainfield. The veterinary clinic is on 3260 Plainfield, as you can see in this site or on this aerial photo. To the south is a car wash, which I believe, a self-service car wash that I believe has been vacant for a while, meaning the improvements are still there, but I don't know that it's actually being utilized. That I understand that, and I should also mention, that the site is in an M-O-N-C Zone District, modern-era commercial zone district. And this type of zone district is destination-oriented, and it is the most auto-oriented of our zone districts. We do, you know, anticipate people traveling to these destinations by car. Together, the properties are about one and a half acres, and there is a slope to the east that goes down to Plaza Drive, which is a private street. The subject property doesn't actually abut that street. There's a narrow strip of land between the subject property and the road. So it, oops, it actually, you might be able, you can see that here. It doesn't actually have frontage on a street. So the existing hospital on the site is about 5,200 square feet and has four examination rooms. The applicant has indicated that the expansion is intended to accommodate the large surface area, service area of the clinic. It draws from as far north as Traverse City over to Lansing on the east and south towards Kalamazoo, as well as the lake shore. A new, single-story, 10,000-square-foot animal hospital is proposed on the 3250 property where the car wash currently is. So pretty much all the improvements on the site will be demolished, save for a portion of the parking lot right at the front, which I'll get to in a minute. And a new animal hospital will be constructed on the southerly parcel. It will, I think, you know, it will be a new state-of-the-art animal hospital meeting the current needs of the region. We don't actually have building, final building elevations for this site, but it is intended to look much like the animal hospital that was recently built in Byron Center. That's part of this same chain. And these elevations and this photo are from the Byron Township Hospital. As far as operation, this is a 24-hour animal hospital. It's an emergency animal hospital. I bet that if any of you have pets, you probably have been there at one time or another. So it is 24-hour, and like I said, it serves a very large region. The applicant estimates there could be over 20 medical spaces that could be used concurrently within the animal hospital, and there could be up to 25 employees at peak times. Currently, according to the applicant, because of COVID-19 protocols, clients remain in their vehicles during their pet's treatment. And if you have questions about that, I'll defer to the applicant. There will be no animal boarding as part of this except as part of treatment or observation if there was a surgery or something like that. As far as the site layout goes, the building and site will meet the minimum, or I should, not the building and site, the building will meet the minimum setbacks in the M-O-N-C Zone District. That's 25 feet at the front, 10 feet on the side, and 25 feet in the rear. So all of that will be, all of that will be met. Relative to the parking lot, currently, the parking lot is about two feet from the front lot line. And the zone district regulations say that in the M-O-N-C Zone District, the parking lots can be located between the building and the street, but it does have to meet the minimum setback for the zone district. Given the fact that this lot is not very deep, it's pretty shallow, the building's being constructed at that minimum setback, and so the parking needs to also be at that minimum setback of 25 feet. When I get onto parking, I'll explain why the applicant doesn't want to remove that non-conforming parking. But suffice it to say, there are a handful of parking spaces, that looks like five, that the applicant proposes to keep in their current non-conforming location. The remainder of the parking lot will meet all other setback requirements. And while detail is not shown on this plan, the site will meet parking lot screening, landscaping, and tree canopy requirements. Relative to parking, our requirement for animal clinics is one and a half parking spaces per thousand. And based on a 10,000-square-foot hospital, that would be 15 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 69 parking spaces. So, and they're finding that they really need the number of parking spaces that is proposed, that are proposed, for the reasons that I gave before. It's a 24-hour use, and it has a very large service area. They did do a parking demand study that indicates that, you know, for the use as this animal hospital will operate, our parking requirement is far too low. They, the applicant's consultant found that really it's operating more like a medical or dental office, and that requires six spaces per thousand square feet. That would be 60 spaces with a maximum of 72 with our 120%. So the Planning Commission does have the ability to allow this greater parking above and beyond our maximum of 120% with the provision of that parking analysis. And so that would be something, along with that 24-hour use, the animal hospital use, that the Planning Commission would need to consider today. Relative to building -- Relative to building elements, as I mentioned, the applicant has really just given us, they've shown us what, what their corporate building looks like, and so it would look something like this. We did a, we did a cursory review of this, and it does look like it would meet our zoning requirements, but the applicant has agreed that the building will meet all our zoning requirements. So we did include, I hope, included that as a condition of approval. If I don't have that specifically mentioned in the resolution, I would encourage that to be a condition of approval. Other conditions of approval would be the removal or the fact that, the removal of one of the pole signs. Pole signs are allowed in this Zone District. I don't know that I have a photo here, but, where's the other sign? There, there is a pole sign at the far north of the site that, that advertises a business on Plaza Drive that is no longer in existence. We don't know the history of the signage, how there was two signs allowed there, but as a condition of approval, we just want one sign on the site. And, you know, according to the applicant's plans, they do intend to remove it, but we'd like that memorialized. So in sum, we're looking at a special land use for a new animal clinic that's twenty-four hours in nature, as well as a request for parking above what would be normally allowed. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Elizabeth. Any questions?
Is that a sidewalk between the parking, the building and the plain field?
Yes, there is a, actually, there is a sidewalk there. There's a new sidewalk there. I'm going to defer to the applicant to talk about that. I know, actually, you know, sometimes I look at aerial photos, and sometimes I look, yep, it says concrete walk, right there. So there is a sidewalk, yes.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thanks, Elizabeth. I'll have the applicant come up if there's other details you want to share with us.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Van Laer, I'm with Xcel Engineering, and we are the civil engineer on this project, here with Dr. Brink from the animal hospital, Mark from National Vet Associates, and Kyle from First Companies, as well as John Forster from Fishbeck, who put together the parking study. Elizabeth, thank you for that great introduction and outlining the project. Basically, the goal of this project is to expand a service that serves a great need and has a lot of demand in our community. There's not, there's not a lot of places in our community that provide this service, and so they have patients come from, from miles away. Think your, your agenda packet mentioned, maybe Traverse City, Lansing, Kalamazoo, so that serves a wide, wide area here, and not, and not just the, the local Grand Rapids community. And, you know, like, like with you and I, you know, medical emergencies hit when, when they're least convenient, and that's not nine to five. So having a twenty-four-hour service is, is very important if you need to get your, your pet the medical attention that it, that it needs. And they found that, really, that, that service is underutilized in the area, and so they're looking to expand that. And, you know, we've, we've heard numerous testimonies, and Elizabeth alluded to it, of people who have, you know, not wanted to use this service, but have found it to be a great benefit, and so expanding this would be, would be wonderful for the community. I'm sure we'll have some more parking discussions, and I would defer those questions to, to John. But the, the proposed site has forty-six spaces, and we're more than, more than doubling the capacity of the, of the building, and they've found that those forty-six spaces are already, at times, can, can be all used up. So that, that provides just a little background on the justification for the ask for more parking spaces here. And as Elizabeth alluded to, the report mentions, you know, this operates more as a doctor or dental office than it does a typical vet clinic. As Elizabeth also mentioned, all the landscaping, lighting, building elements, and our detailed stormwater management plans will be further developed and reviewed during LUDs, and we've already begun, begun that process and are hoping to submit for LUDs very, very soon, should you choose to approve this and allow this to move forward today. To answer your question, Mr. Roseboom, the, there is an existing sidewalk along Plainfield here, and I don't know if you were referring to this area along the building, but that is sidewalk for employee entry. And then this line right here was a small retaining wall that we had in the initial grading plan, but by, by adjusting a few grades as we've been working through this, we've actually removed that retaining wall now. So we're happy to answer any other questions you may have, and look forward to the, the future of this project.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicants?
On that, on that sidewalk there, so with the parking being so close to the sidewalk, how do you keep the cars from impinging on the pedestrian walkway there?
There, there is a curb and gutter there to, to hold those vehicles back, and I think we would be more than willing to add some tire stops there as well to hold those vehicles back.
I'm also confused about whether the sidewalk continues through this property. I know that there was a project to add sidewalk along here, but in the twenty-two aerial that I'm looking at, it doesn't look like that is a contiguous sidewalk. But you're, you're telling me there's a, a five-foot sidewalk that goes, that goes through there? Okay.
Yeah, this, this is based on a recent topographic survey that we did, and you can see the sidewalk starts up here at the north and kind of curves back to the, to the lot, and then follows all the way, all the way through here. So through, through the limits of our, of our topo, there was sidewalk there.
Okay, thank you. I think you said you're going to defer parking questions to someone else, but I'm wondering, with the parking study that you had done, it said sixty spaces is what's needed, and you're proposing sixty-nine spaces, it seems like a reasonable spot that would continue to give you the amount of spaces that you need, and also meet the requirements of the landscape buffer along Plainfield, would be to just get rid of those five spots, and you still have more than what your report requires. What are your thoughts on that?
A good, good question. So it's, it's more than the, the five spaces up here that we would lose. If, if we lost those and removed those, those non-existing, non-conforming spaces, that would require that the parking lot meet all of the setback requirements. So we would also lose the first row of parking and parking along the north side of the, of the lot and along the building. And so we, we would lose up to seventeen to twenty spaces in total, and not just the five along the frontage.
If we conditioned it so you only lost the five along the frontage, would that be agreeable to you?
Yeah, that, that would work.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point?
I have one.
Go ahead.
With the removal of the retaining wall, would you be able to then add a little bit of more green space there as far as plantings? Would that be addressed in the LUDs?
Yeah, that, we, we will address that through LUDs. And in order to remove the retaining wall, we actually moved the, moved the building back away from Plainfield a couple feet, so we're not right on the twenty-five-foot setback. I believe it's closer to twenty-seven or twenty-eight, and so there, there will be a few additional feet of green space in that area.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today about this case on Plainfield, please come forward, state your name, and share your brief thoughts with us.
Hello, my name is Donnie. I'm a current resident of the Third Ward, which isn't a part of the, which isn't a part of Plainfield currently. I do believe that the zone, the unhoused population is now increasing. I spent a good majority of my life on the northwest side of Grand Rapids. I feel like, my thoughts on this exactly is that it's severely insensitive for this city to spend more money on pets or people's pets that they cannot afford to take care of. We have a lot of pets that roam the streets and do the things because people just drop them off. We have a lot of higher, increasing amount of gentrification that's happening, so I feel like it's highly insensitive to build a pet hospital here when our unhoused population is increasing. I know that the low-income-based housing that surrounds this would, would probably not appreciate it either. I think that this space would be better used for either a unhoused population resource to give them the ability to be able to live outside comfortably, or have it be a natural resource center for the low-income population that lives around the surrounding spites. I understand that this is like a commercial site, but also, if we're not aiding to the community who lives here, works here, sleeps here, and pays for the things that go on in this city, then all we're really doing is pushing people around, and, in, in the name of what our, our privileged pleasures, right? You know, like this, this, this animal hospital, don't get me wrong, I love animals, I want to see animals prosper too. I want to see animals, I want to see people take care of their pets, I don't want to see them out in the street. I don't, also don't want to see people like having to like move away because now they can't afford some things. So again, my name is Donnie. I've been here about thirty years, and I just find this very insensitive to the needs of Grand Rapids, especially since that was being said. The needs of Grand Rapids are more resources, and that's on the southeast side, northwest side, northeast side. Plainfield, for that matter, a couple blocks down, there's, like I said, a large community of low-income houses. So if, if there could be more attention to that, rather than being insensitive to the matter, I would very much appreciate that. I'm sure the people of Grand Rapids would appreciate that, too. Just making an observation here, the sidewalk that passes through kind of interrupts that pedestrian sidewalk and takes the right away from us, so justice for Patrick. Thank you.
All right, anyone else for this case?
This whole, I'm Barb. This case makes me smile inside my heart, because first of all, thank you. I appreciate your sensitivity to the people, and having had to walk the area many times in my life, and knowing people who do live in the area, I agree with them one hundred percent. But I also want to say that their business has been awesome for us. We've used it several times, unfortunately, we've had to. But the kindness that they exhibited, and I just loved their waiting room for us. It was, it's cozy, when you're scared, when you're lonely, it's nice to be able to converse with others. So if they do get a bigger building, we might lose all of that. But then I also want to thank you for mentioning the part about the five houses being removed, or, excuse me, five parking spaces being removed. So there's that little buffer for the people as we walk there. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Anyone else on this case on Plainfield? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this point? Okay, and discussion on this? We've addressed parking, and they're amenable to that change. I think that's smart. Anything else?
Is there any restriction around that? If we, so to Commissioner Joseph's question to the applicant, if we require them or condition the approval on the removal of those five spaces connected to Plainfield, can, do we have the power then to allow them to continue to have the other spaces? The applicant suggested that was sort of all or nothing.
Yes, and it'll be noted in the, the findings, and then we'll proceed that with the LUDs permit.
Okay, thanks.
I do think in any case, removal of the two other curb cuts associated with the former car wash will be a great improvement for the pedestrian experience.
Yeah, I, the only other thing I would say, and then I'd be happy to make a motion, you know, I think as a commercial corridor, the use is consistent with the zoning requirements that we are sitting here trying to apply. It is an existing commercial space. This is an improvement upon an existing commercial space, and so I think it's appropriate under the, the laws and the regulations that we are charged to apply to this case, so. If anybody else doesn't have any comments, I'm happy to make a motion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission approves the request of NBA Great Lakes Veterinary Management LLC, Tim White, for special land use approval to demolish an existing car wash to facilitate the expansion of an existing twenty-four-hour vet clinic and surface parking lot for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the Zone District, because it supports the vitality of the business district, provides a mix of use in commercial area, is destination-oriented, high-intensity businesses and services with the dependence on the motor vehicle, with motor vehicles are anticipated in the M-O-N-C Zone District. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of Section 5.12.8.E., because the site is designed to comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance. All elements of the site design are harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to topography, the size and type of lot, character of the neighborhood, and adjoining property, and the type, size, and proportions of buildings. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the proposed use will support the desired future character of the neighborhood by providing a variety of personal services. The slope on the property will also remain intact. The proposed use will not have adverse effects on the neighborhood, because adequate parking to meet the proposed parking demand will be provided. The parking lot will be screened with landscaping as required. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses, or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, noise, or odors, because the use currently operates without incident, and no boarding of animals will be conducted as part of this use. The proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment, because the site is already part of the sidewalk system, and the proposed landscaping will reestablish the street wall. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services do already exist or will be provided at no additional cost, because the proposed use will be adequately served by existing public or private infrastructure. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability and/or the economic welfare of the city, because the use will not place an unfair burden on city services, and the use will encourage other investment in the area. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to the project. Standard conditions set A approvals, which are now on the screen and have been previously read in another motion. Two, that an application to combine the two lots shall be submitted prior to issuance of the LUDs permit. Three, that the building shall meet the building element requirements applicable to the M-O-N-C Zone District. And four, that only one pole sign is permitted. Quick question before I conclude the motion, do I need to include in it the applicant's willingness to eliminate the five parking spaces shown in their site plan adjacent to Plainfield? All right, so that's also part of my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Thank you.
I will be abstaining, since I wasn't here for the entire presentation.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Shannon. Did you get that, Carol? All right, perfect. All right, our next case is sixty-three Astor Place, Northeast.
Okay, the applicant is seeking approval to construct a two-family development.
Okay, the applicant is seeking approval to construct a two-family development on a vacant lot in the TN LDR Zone District. As you may know, the new construction of a two-family home is a special land use in the TN LDR Zone District. The master plan designates this area as medium-low-density residential, and the subject parcel is located within the boundaries of the Michigan Street Corridor Plan, which speaks to two key principles related to this project, one being improving existing housing stock and enhancing the integrity of each neighborhood's unique character, as well as providing a broad range of high-quality housing choices and price points to meet the diverse needs of existing and new residents. The subject property is entirely surrounded by medium-low-density residential. The subject property is a vacant lot located near the intersection of Fountain Street and Diamond here to the west. As indicated, the property is located on Astor Place, an unpaved public right-of-way with approximately 24 feet in width. A portion of the accessway does contain brick and loose gravel, which you can see on the right-hand side here. The few other properties that have frontage on Astor Place actually take their addresses and primary frontage from the surrounding streets. This subject property would be the only one that had primary frontage on Astor Place. In addition to the lack of the paved street, the property is not currently served with public utilities. The nearest services are from Fountain Street to the north. The applicant has obtained a minor vacation of Astor Place, which will allow for private utilities to be located within the roadway connecting to the services found on Fountain Street. If the property is to be developed, public street and other infrastructure improvements would be installed by the developer's expense. The minimum lot area and lot with requirements of the TN LDR Zone District have been met based on the submitted plans by the applicant. The building itself would be 28 feet wide and 48 feet deep, giving us a building footprint of 2,720 square feet. The building does meet the setback requirements in the TN LDR Zone District, and the proposed use does also meet the requirements of Article 5.906, which speaks to attached single and two-family dwellings in terms of parking. An 11-foot-wide driveway with an adjoining 1,350-square-foot parking area is currently proposed. In this Zone District, three parking spaces are required for two dwelling units with a maximum of four spaces allowed. Several angles of parking have been proposed, however, proposed arrangements of parking have not yet met all of our requirements. The angle of parking spaces will need to be evaluated as a modification of the building or site design. In addition to that, parking lots with three or more spaces do require striping, and the applicant has indicated intentions to provide a parking plan that reflects appropriate striping. However, new plans didn't quite meet those requirements, but those can be worked out throughout LUDs permitting as well. At present, there is fencing located to the west and north perimeter of the site. An additional fencing is proposed by the applicant for the remaining boundaries of the property, but those are not included in these plans today. In terms of building height and design materials, the proposed development meets all of our zoning requirements. In terms of transparency, nearly all of the elevations do meet the transparency requirement, with the exception of the north elevation, which indicated an 8.8% transparency. This Zone District requires 10%. The Planning Commission may consider the reduction of transparency, or that reduction can be rectified at permitting. Each dwelling unit will consist of two nearly identical four-bedroom layouts stacked on top of each other. From this slide, the floor plan on the left is the upper level, and the floor plan on the right is the main level. Each bedroom will contain an en suite bathroom and a shared living space, as well as a shared kitchen and dining space. However, there is no indication of a shared powder room in either unit. And although there is no requirement for an accessory structure for storage, current plans do not indicate a space for tenant storage. The lower level does face Astor Place, while the upper level entrance would face the parking lot area. Several new trees will provide parking screening from adjacent neighbors to the north and the west. Based on the submitted plans, the applicant has indicated a three-foot buffer on the side yard here, and a five-foot buffer on the rear yard. As such, the side yard buffer would need a reduction in order to meet that requirement. In consideration of the reduction, the side yard buffer requirement is six feet, so should the Planning Commission determine that the proposed land use is appropriate, the minimum tree canopy landscaping standards and plant materials, those can be also assessed at LUDs permitting. The applicant submitted letters to each owner that abuts either the property or Astor Place itself, and likewise, all of the property owners within that area were previously approached as part of the minor vacation process that occurred in June of 2021. Two adjacent neighbors have indicated support of the project after speaking directly to the applicant. However, four letters of opposition so far have been received related to this project. In sum, the key considerations we'd like you to consider today is the impact of the two-family home on the desired character of the surrounding neighborhood, the intensity of the use relative to the number of bedrooms in each proposed unit, the appropriateness of the amount of off-street parking available for tenants, as well as the capability of the proposed structure with the architectural character of the block and neighborhood, I'm sorry, the compatibility of the proposed structure, the appropriateness of the building and parking lot orientation on the site, and lastly, the availability of onsite storage for tenant use.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
I just have one. So when you say that the developer would have to pay for street improvements, would that include like paving and, like how much would they have to improve the?
Yeah, everything.
Everything, okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions at this time, I'll invite the applicant up, and they can share any other details with us that they'd like to. Is there no representative from the applicant here?
He'll come up instead.
Okay. Are you with the applicant?
Pardon me?
Do you represent the applicant?
Well, I was hoping the architect would be here to represent him, but...
Oh, okay.
I'm Richard Bruni.
Okay.
I'm the applicant's father.
Ah, got it, okay.
He was born and raised in Grand Rapids by me, and currently he can't be here today because he is busy designing cities and buildings elsewhere in the Middle East. He's in Dubai right now. But his heart is still here in Grand Rapids, and he's done a lot of research here, and he wants to get involved. In fact, he, his thesis was on ways to improve Grand Rapids, and he's the only person I know that has about a five-foot diameter model of the city of Grand Rapids, with the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel about an inch high, and his ideas for it, which was featured in the Grand Rapids Press some years ago. But here's, one of the things he has to say, which I'm sure is no news to you, there's a severe shorting, a severe housing shortage in Grand Rapids and west Michigan at the moment, and it's causing rents to increase dramatically. Without further supply, prices will continue to rise, spiraling significantly and making housing challenging. Roughly 37,000 housing units are needed in Canton, Ottawa Counties by 2025, according to Housing Next. And currently, there are 372,000 housing units in those two counties, so that's a 10% increase in three years. He has shown his plans for this project to a couple of people, a leading housing advocate and a former leader within the city planning department here, and both have enthusiastically supported his ideas for it. And the proposal for 63 Astor Place is something he would like to start with and perhaps go on from there. They said that's exactly what this city needs. I hope to find out that that's true. I only got brought into this yesterday when I heard he couldn't come here. And he had learned that he couldn't attend via Zoom. So he is listening to live streaming of it right now from Dubai, and the architect and I are supposed to be here covering for him, but I don't see anyone from Matheson Matheson yet. Anyway, I'll hang around, and if there's any questions I can answer, I will.
All right, thanks. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Bruni?
I have one. I have one. The, um...
Sir, you have a question?
I have a question. So each unit has four bedrooms, each with their own bathroom, so I, and there's four parking spots. It seems that eight people could live here that are not related and each have their own car. Where would you expect others to park, if that's the case?
There's how many parking spaces?
Four, I think, was what was said. Four parking spaces, but what leads me to that question is that each bedroom is an en suite, which would sometimes be related to, you know, four different roommates living together, and possibly the need for eight parking spaces.
I know that when I go visit him in Dubai, we're all pretty glad that his three bedrooms come with three bathrooms.
Yeah, I'm sure that's...
That's what he designs. He knows people like that, and so the plan was not to have, you know, push extra people in there, but to give everyone the privacy of their own bathroom.
Any other questions?
Are you aware of any conversations aside from the letters that we've received with the Neighborhood Association and their response?
No, I'm not even aware of the letters you've received, other than one from Mr. Vandermeer, who is here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today on this case, please come forward, state your name, and share your brief thoughts with us.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Towers, 1032 Fountain Street. Thank you for this opportunity for letting me speak against 63 Astor Place. I'd like to, I'd like to either present or give the commission three sheets, 24 signatures of immediate residents within the area opposed to 63 Astor Place, Fountain Street addresses, Helen Street addresses. So either you can look at these or take these. I'm on the verge of being heartbroken even imagining of this eight-person duplex being built. It seems vulgar and greedy ploy to make money in such a cheap use of this open grassy lot that has been behind my house for 33 years and many other people who've lived around it on Fountain and Helen. Just to show you briefly here, this is a picture of my garden. I considered a humble postage stamp of a backyard, but for 33 years, I've entertained and sat out there in the mornings, afternoons, and in the evenings with my friends. And the prospect of having eight vehicles parked directly behind that womanized fence just disappoints and concerns me a great deal. I'll continue. To have eight vehicles at any given time starting up, pulling in and out, right behind my fence, is depressing to imagine after 33 years of living and enjoying a quiet, serene garden space. Add to that a potential student population that would be housed in this prison box partying all the time. And by the way, I don't threaten to call the police for noise and nuisance complaints. I promise to call the police. Think of the traffic coming and going out of Astor Place, going to class and coming back for lunch, going to a class, going back, coming back for dinner, and then going to work, repeating that eight people, eight times by eight people every day. And the waste recycling containers that will linger on Fountain Street if they are not properly returned to the duplex. There could be four or more of these containers added now to the end of Astor Place and left on Fountain for days after trash pickup has happened due to the nature of some people not returning them properly. My neighbors and I were offered the property, my neighbors at 1036 Fountain and I were offered the property by a previous owner for around $27,000 or $28,000 about four years ago. My brief talks with the city at that time said that if the lot was split into two lots running north and south, and combined with my property and my neighbor's property on Fountain, that would violate a length-to-width ratio aspect that the city would not allow. They would be too deep and too expensive. And now the best anyone can think of is to create this nuisance central waiting to happen. We see a trend in owner-occupied residency because the neighborhood has gotten better.
All right, thank you, Mr. Towers. Your time's up.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else on this case?
The young man who spoke two cases back spoke much longer, and I did go to the restroom, and he was still speaking.
We've used the timer for every speaker, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this case?
Good afternoon. My name is Philip Fenema. I'm the property owner at 1027 Fountain, which is across the street and slightly adjacent to Astor. I would echo some of the same concerns that Mr. Towers brought forward. My primary concern was already brought, which is the parking and overflow parking between Houseman Field and the farmer's market that both exist right in that area. Parking for both of those areas fill up the street frequently. Anytime the farmer's market's open, most of the street parking spaces are full, and the potential for adding, you know, a residence that could potentially house eight additional people or eight additional vehicles is concerning. I also have a concern about resurfacing Astor itself. Right now, that area is porous along with the lot, and I'm kind of concerned about water flowing down that Astor Street into Fountain, and what considerations will be taken at that point. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. John Vandermeer, my name. Been living on Helen Street for 60 years. It's all that lot being empty for 60 years. I have seen the blueprints. I've got to read some of this. I'm not, I'm not real good at public speaking, so we have seen the blueprints of the proposed two-family dwelling, and we feel it is not suitable for our neighborhood. I think that calling it a two-family dwelling is not right. This is a building which has... This is a building which has eight bedrooms with a possibility of double beds in each bedroom, and we're talking could be 16 people living in that, in that building, all right? According to the blueprints, this building will have eight bedrooms, and each bedroom could have a double bed. With this many bedrooms, the possibility is at least 16 people could be residents in this structure. This sounds to me like it'd be a mini motel. We do not want a mini motel with all these people and all these cars going in and out of this little alley area. The area around 63 Astor is mostly single-family houses with children, and adding a building with a possibility of up to 16 cars going in and out of this narrow alley is not conducive to the quiet neighborhood we have enjoyed for 60 years. So my wife and I, Donna and I, are 100% against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ryan Seekman. I live at 1036 Fountain Street with my wife. We've lived there for about six years, and I'm very much opposed to this. I agree with the last three speakers and my neighbor Andrew Towers especially, just all the issues that this could bring up, trying to fit that many people in there. When I first got the letter from the owner of the lot, and it mentioned that him and his wife were interested in architecture and were excited for the development there, I was honestly a little excited too for what was going to go in there. And then I saw the plans for the big vinyl square with eight bedrooms per floor, or eight bedrooms total, and wasn't as excited anymore. So I'm very much opposed to that and just want to agree with all the previous things that people have said, all those concerns, and I hope that you do not approve this request. Thank you.
My name is Karen Allen. I live at 1028 Fountain Street. I'm next door to Andrew, and I am against it for all the things that he said as well, especially the parking, because my property is adjacent to the back where the parking would go. And right now, I have a very quiet backyard. We've owned our home for about seven years. We just paid it off. And to see this going in there, I mean, when we very first heard about it, we were thinking it was going to be like the other duplexes around, like the one next door to us, which is a two-bedroom up, two-bedroom down, a couple lives up, a couple lives down. And I thought, well, that's okay. But when I saw the plans online, I said, hey, wait a minute. Why are there no bathrooms outside of these rooms? Why are they all en suite? It seems odd. Who would they put in here? So I guess those are most of my concerns, and it's why I do not think that you should approve this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, turn to you. I'm not sure if there's other questions for the applicant or if maybe there's anything you want to address. I know it may be hard to do that on your son's behalf.
One thing that's been mentioned several times is the traffic and the density. And according to the plans for the use of the land, the density is fully consistent with the neighborhood and would not be close to the densities or traffic on nearby alleys. For example, Caroline Place, Mack Avenue, Enset Place, Stormsand Place, or even Iris Place, despite most of these right-of-ways being narrower. So, yeah, I guess we can all visualize what we want in terms of how much traffic there's going to be, how many people will live there and everything, but we could be wrong. I think we see what's in the plans, what the idea is, what the intent is, and that's what we have to work with. And everything is, you know, within what the zoning looks for.
Okay, Commissioners, any discussion on this?
I have one question for staff. You, on the northern lot line there, there's going to be a six-foot privacy fence, but then I believe you said it's only three feet between there and the parking lot, and that would require an additional, like that would require, it, the fence doesn't make up for that?
You're exactly right, yeah. And so they would have to do, I believe it's, it's six feet. And in previous conversations, they were willing to go to five, so we anticipate that they would work that out during the LUDS review.
Okay.
But it would still require a reduction.
Yes.
And we haven't had a parking plan come to the city that we know can work at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I thought, I thought I heard you say four parking spaces, but on the plan, it looks like eight. Can you help me?
Yeah, so four, four would be the maximum there. When they initially submitted plans to us, they had indicated up to eight. And so that was part of, of the revisions that needed to be made on the site plan, which then we decided to pass over to LUDS review at this time.
So because it's just a duplex, we have the up to three or up to four with the 20% increase, it's not based on the number of bedrooms that are associated?
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
Would Astor Place be available for on-street parking? Would it be wide enough?
No.
So what we have drawn here is for up to eight cars, but what we're saying is that it's only going to have four? Or will it have eight? This...
I don't think we, I mean, the, the plan for parking shows up to eight. That's what's been indicated. We're only allowed to allow up to four because it's a duplex, even though there are eight bedrooms with en-suite bathrooms and no community space.
I do have the architect here. If you have any questions that you'd like to address to him?
That'd be great.
Hello, everyone. My name's Matthew Schulte, architect with Matheson Matheson Architects.
Can you provide some clarity on the parking situation here?
Yes, I can. The parking is currently a combination of spaces for at least three vehicles. And we're, we're understanding that there is a minimum of three required, a maximum of four that would be allowed. There is the space to the north, which is intended to be an ample area to maneuver, but currently, we're not intending for there to be anything more than the minimum three or maximum four spaces in that location. And what we're showing, if you look all the way to the north, an area of permeable pavers to allow stormwater to penetrate, and then an area just to the south of that of asphalt to be moving in and out for vehicles to maneuver in and out of the driveway space.
Can you talk to us about the floor plan choices in terms of making every bedroom have an en-suite bathroom?
Yeah, of course. So we're understanding that there is an intent for a diversity of housing choices. In particular, the owner was looking for an opportunity to have an en-suite bathroom that would serve each bedroom. The thinking was, or still is, that a kind of primary audience for this particular property might be college students, in which case it would make most sense for a bedroom and bathroom scenario for each individual person. But I will say this, it is not, that isn't a limiting circumstance. The intent is to have, you know, each, each bedroom kind of offered its bit of privacy and a shared common space, living room, kitchen, and so forth to the south.
One other question. So the, remind me which elevation is. One of them is only at 8% and the transparency requirement, that one, yep, would be 10. Are you willing to increase transparency to meet ordinance requirements?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question. Can you describe what kind of outdoor or green space for the occupants of the building? What it's intended to, how it would serve the two different entities?
Right. There is some green space to, to the, just to the east of the entry, and also some green space to the west of the property. So those spaces are, are open and available for further development. There, there was at a point in the past a proposition to do, to have kind of a deck or patio space to the west of the property or to the west of the residents on the property. For cost reasons, that was taken off of these particular plans, but there is still that open space. And additionally, we're showing an area of green space buffer both to the west and to the north of the driveway and parking area.
So will that whole area where the cars are parked, I see, you know, right up to the building, be paved?
Okay, are, are you referring to the, the pavers to the north and then the...
Yes, where the, where the parking spots are. And then that, the white space below it before you get to the actual structure, is that all pavement there?
Yeah, that, that's a correct interpretation of what we've shown. Again, I will say that we've had, we have had some conversation with both Sarah Beamlander and with Elizabeth Zeller. We're understanding that there are some, some of the finer points of how the driveway and parking area is laying out, and fully intending to comply with, with all of the zoning regulations, any of the conditions that are placed on the property.
You know, I appreciate the idea of bringing affordable housing. It just seems like a lot of bedrooms, eight bedrooms on a very small lot. Did you ever consider like two bedrooms or three bedrooms per, per space, given the lack of parking availability and other things?
In fact, we considered a single-family residential property or project for this particular location. It was the owner's decision to pursue four bedrooms per, per dwelling unit as a, as part of this proposal.
Could you review the architectural design of the building relative to the neighborhood?
Okay.
Materials and so forth?
Absolutely. Right, so this is a pretty modest, I would call it a fairly straightforward, single-gable residential property or, or project. We're showing some areas of vinyl siding, shingle roof. There's an area at the entry of wood siding. So it's a, it's a mixture of those, those materials and residential-type windows. Does that, does that describe more what you're looking for?
Yeah, and maybe could you talk through how those decisions were made relative to the surrounding structures?
Okay, sure. Well, we see actually all of those materials are present in the adjacent properties. So the vinyl siding approximates a wood lap siding, which is very common in this particular area and in the neighborhood. Of course, the shingle roof is also very common, and we do see some areas of wood siding on many properties as well. So we feel that this is a, a good combination of the vernacular materials in the neighborhood.
What's the material, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it here, around those front windows there on the east elevation?
Yep, that's a cementitious panel. So that would be similar to a hardy panel or something like that, relatively smooth. And there is, what you see is the panel edges, so functioning like a rain screen material.
Go ahead.
Is there going to be any sort of, and I don't even, I, maybe Elizabeth, you can help me clarify, but in a, in a situation like this, this is an awful lot of people in one space, what is the waste situation? The waste, is there going to be one big dumpster? Are there going to be a handful of dumpsters? And where will those be located?
Okay, I can answer this. We're assuming that there will be two, you know, two dumpsters, the, the size that a single person can wheel individually. I think they're most often referred to as Herbie Kirbys. So we're assuming that there would be one of each for, or one for each unit, and then probably a smaller recycling unit for, for each. The location likely towards the west side of the property, just south of the asphalt area, so that you could, that could easily be wheeled forward and out to the driveway entry, so that they could maybe picked up at Astor Place.
Yeah, with the improvements of Astor Place, would trash be able to get down? Does trash, can it fit down there? Yeah, okay.
Is Astor Place one-way or two-way, two-way?
It's, it's really, I think functionally, it's, it's two ways because you can only, you have to, you have to pull in and pull back out. There's, you're not able to drive through. But it's, in a way, neither, neither one-way nor two-way, is it doesn't really conduct a lot of automobile traffic. It's really just those folks who are accessing Astor Place. And then there are two additional garages that are served off of Astor, one all the way at the south end and one about halfway and facing to the east.
So it's really like a long driveway?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then is there a place to turn around at the end of that driveway?
At the end of the driveway or at the end of Astor?
End of Astor Place.
There is not a turnaround at the end of Astor.
Just the parking area that they've proposed.
Okay. So waste containers can't be picked up down that street? Correct, okay. So they would have to be wheeled all the way down?
They could be wheeled down to Fountain, that's correct.
To Fountain.
Oh, sorry, that, technically, that's north of Fountain, but yes, down, down the hill.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about setbacks. Maybe, maybe it's a staff question and an applicant question, and I'm, I think I'm looking at materials submitted by the applicant around 27-foot setback required for the building line, and that it says however, 10 to 12 feet expected based on surrounding houses. Can somebody just answer the question that the existing, or if the proposed plan meets all setback requirements? Obviously, this is a strange lot and that it's in the sort of middle of a, so could somebody walk me through whether or not the proposal meets the setbacks, setback requirements?
Yeah, the building itself does meet the setback requirements. The parking area was really what was in question in regard to setbacks.
So the way that it is proposed in the application, it does not, the parking area does not meet the setback requirements?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for the applicant at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, discussion on this case.
I think this is a tough one. I am definitely in support of housing choices and adding more housing to our city. We definitely need it. I'm a little concerned about not having a parking plan that seems to align with the number of residents we'll expect in this, in this duplex. I, I'm not an engineer and I'm not an expert. I just don't understand how the circulation is going to work at this point, so I'm concerned about that, more so than other elements, I think. Obviously, the design is up to the architect.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'm in favor of a duplex or housing here. I think we need to fit that in wherever we can. So I'm definitely not opposed to that, and I hope we continue to see more of this. I do think that this site presents some interesting challenges, and I'm not satisfied with what's being proposed. There's so much confusion about the parking, because I feel like they're trying to provide enough space for more than four cars, but say that there's only room for three to four cars, because that's what the code requires, but they know that that's not enough. And there's not a natural relief valve here, like we have on a normal infill. This is not a normal infill. This is a very unique infill situation. While I agree that, you know, architecture can take some liberties, I don't think that this is a great fit with the surrounding architecture. So I'm, you know, I don't, I think that that's another standard that we rely on, and I don't think that this is a great fit. So, yeah, I could go either way, but I'm inclined to not support this.
I have a, I'm in agreement with your feelings and expressions about just trying to fit so much into a space that's landlocked, except for a small, albeit, you know, a street, but more like an alley, and the ingress and egress with the density of this. We need the housing. It's a nice lot. It's a beautiful neighborhood. I just, I have problems with the whole parking plan, and coming in and out of there, and how you turn around, and where else people might have to park if they're living there.
Yeah, I think the use, the general use of multifamily in this space is appropriate. I think as we walk through the standards, you know, they meet the standards in lots of ways. But as we look at some of the standard issues around intensity, with the use, the way that the site plan and the design have been proposed, do not, are not consistent and compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So I would support even multifamily housing in this space, because it does meet the requirements. I cannot support the intensity of the use as proposed, given the design and the parking.
I agree. I think, like everyone has stated here, we need the, although we need the space, I just don't, I feel like there are far too many unknowns, and I don't quite understand how this parking and then the access to the property as far as city services is not, I'm not quite understanding that as well, especially with the trash pickup. I think that could result in some issues.
Yeah, I just echo everything that you guys just said. I think we're all completely, complete aligned with that. And I know this doesn't need to be said, but I just have to say it for the, just for the record. College students, formerly unhoused people, low-income people do not create nuisance in and of themselves in our neighborhoods. And I don't think just the kind of language that was used today, I think it's inappropriate. I don't think it should be used to explain. I would agree with the cars, of course, the parking, you know. If we all drive, you know, Chevy Cruises, then maybe not. This would be a problem. But if you're driving your Ds or 350, this could be a huge problem in this, you know, for parking in this kind of duplex. But yeah, just for the record, we are talking about people. We are talking about human life. And I think anytime we're talking about that, especially in respect to housing, that the language that we use is important. So that's just my feelings on that.
I agree. Thanks for saying that.
I think my feeling is I could support this. I am not clear on how the parking is going to, or would actually work. But if there was a way that it could be demonstrated to work, I would be in support. And in this case, because of the particularities, I would want, a lot of times, we say, we want the applicant to work with the staff through the LUDS permitting process, understanding that there's some give and take there. In this case, I would want it to be strictly adhering to the zoning ordinance. But if it could be strictly adhered to, then I would be in favor of it.
I'm not sure if this is inappropriate for me to pose an additional question, but I would like to know, if possible, from Mr. Van Streer. You mentioned that you had some opposition architecturally, and I wonder if you could elaborate on that, if that refers specifically to the parking plan, or if you're referring to the materials or composition of the proposal?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to pose the question at this point. But I think it's a combination of all of the above. I think that the choice of materials and the design of the structure itself is somewhat inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood. But I don't, I don't think the question sways the board at this point, but just for feedback.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other thoughts on this, or would someone be open to making a motion?
I do have one other thing to comment on. There seems to be a lack of community support around the project, and especially the Neighborhood Association, which is quite active in this community. I'm, it would, I think, have been important for their support, or at least their input, and the Brickyard Plan, and their planning around this community as well. Just wanted to state that.
I'll make a motion, but I do also want to just state that we've had other applications in front of us where longstanding open space has become sort of relied upon by the neighborhood. And I want to be clear, my motion, which will be to deny the application, is not based on an expectation by any adjacent landowner that this space is theirs, or that it needs to be maintained in an undeveloped way. My motion will be based on the application as it stands today, and whether or not it's consistent with the adjacent uses. So just to be clear with that. So I'll give it a shot. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission denies the request of Richard Breen for special land use approval to construct a new two-family dwelling at 63 Aster Place Northeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will not be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use detracts from the character of the medium-low-density residential neighborhood because of the intensity of the use, specifically testimony and application that the use will be a four-bedroom unit, four bedrooms per unit with two units, and is not consistent with the TNLDR zone district relative to building and parking lot scale and proportions. The proposed use will not meet the site plan review standards of 5.12.8.1E because the site has not been designed to completely comply with all of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, the building and parking lot design is not harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to the size and type of lot, the character of the neighborhood, and adjoining properties. The proposed use will not be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the general intensity of the proposed use and its design will not reflect the intensity of the TNLDR zone district. The proposed use will have adverse effects on the neighborhood because an appropriate ratio of proposed parking per tenant is not appropriate, and the increase in the intensity of the use of the alleyway, as described in testimony, will create negative effects for adjacent neighbors. The proposed uses will be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future uses, or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, noise, or visual clutter. Because the intensity of the use is not compatible with the intensity of the TNLDR zone district, the proposed parking lot design does not conform to landscape buffering and parking screening requirements. The proposed use would adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment, because the proposed building and its parking lot are not appropriately oriented to facilitate safe and practical pedestrian circulation on the site. And the proposed location and landscaping of the parking lot does not contribute to the establishing of the street wall. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services will not be provided at no additional cost, because there are no existing public or private infrastructure services to the lot. The proposed use would be detrimental to the financial stability and economic welfare of the city, because as with any increase in density, there is potential for additional costs through service calls to city agencies. And per testimony, the inability for city trash to access the lot. I believe that that's the conclusion of my motion, unless there's some other components that I should add.
Would you be amenable to, under Standard 1, after four bedrooms per unit, would you be willing to add, or amenable to adding with en suite bathrooms? Because I think the indication that those are private for individual is maybe, I don't know, reflects the intensity more than just the number of bedrooms itself?
I think to the extent that it could limit renewed application, I don't think that there's anything in and of itself of an en suite that goes to density. So with the four bedrooms, to me, that's just the number of people who can live in the home, the intensity of the use. I don't think en suite, personally, I just don't think that that's dispositive of intensity.
All right, we have a motion. Is there support for the motion?
I'll support.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Our last case for today is 2550 Eastern Ave Southeast, a conditional rezoning.
Well, I think this is going to be another record meeting. I was expecting it to be long, but it looks like we're making good time.
We can talk about the record after we set the record.
Okay. So the last item on the agenda is, I have the wrong paper, just a moment. I'm so excited. The, this next item is, it's actually a request from staff, 2550 Eastern Avenue Southeast. This is a request to rezone the property back to its original zoning. While it's not actually shown on this map, the property is zoned MCNC Commercial with a conditional zoning agreement. Now, that was done back in March of 2017. City Commission approved a conditional rezoning agreement affecting the area of the property shown in green. The property is improved with the former Seymour School, and it was zoned mid-century neighborhood, low-density residential, and it was used by a church, which still owns the property, the portion of the school property to the north here. So Metro Health, U of M Metro Health, was entering the market at that time, and they wanted to purchase this property and establish a medical office use there. They did do significant neighborhood outreach, and the proposed use was supported by the public. This is what is, this is what they proposed. And it was an office building with a parking lot, and they were going to demolish the building, and it would look like this. So in order, rather than rezoning it to the office zone district, which would have been a spot zoning, which would have been not appropriate, it was rezoned to this conditional rezoning agreement. So in your packet, we did include the entire rezoning agreement, and that is something that was offered by the applicant with conditions. So it was tied to this agreement. So the health system has since abandoned this site for development, and it's now been sold. So the agreement, after two years, became valid, invalid. So the agreement's invalid, the property's been sold, and the zoning ordinance directs staff to undertake rezoning back to the original zoning. And you might recall, we did something similar on Coit, across from the Coit Elementary. A portion of that PRD, you know, was never developed. So we rezoned back to the original zone district. The same thing is being proposed here. So there, the master plan, there's no area-specific plan that applies to this portion of the neighborhood. The South Town Business Area Specific Plan stops at the commercial portion. So we're looking at the 2002 master plan. The future land use map indicates institutional, which reflected the former school use. That being said, the underlying zoning to residential is still appropriate, given all the surrounding zoning as mid-century neighborhood, low-density residential. So what we're proposing today is just rezoning it back to what you see on this map. One last thing I'd like to add is that the property has been sold, and to ICCF, and ICCF does have plans for redevelopment of this site. We have an application in, and we anticipate that coming to Planning Commission in July, after this rezoning is done back to residential. I want to emphasize that that project is not under consideration today. This is only the rezoning back to residential. And regardless of whether the ICCF project comes, or, you know, to fruition, or whether, you know, even if they hadn't applied, this would be the appropriate course of action, according to what the zoning ordinance tells us to do. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Elizabeth? All right, thank you. So you're the applicant, so we don't need to do that. I'll open up the public hearing on this rezoning request. Please come forward, state your name, and share your thoughts if you're here for this case.
I'm Jan Vanderward. I work at ICCF Community Homes. I'm not supposed to talk until July, because she just said so. Thank you for your work on this. I don't understand the zoning code and why we have to go through two steps, but we're fine with it. fine with it. And I'm not talking about July, but a lot of community engagement has already happened relating to a development you're not in consideration of today. So as it pertains to the site and the rezone, I think it's very important to realize that this part of Alger Heights is a crossroads. It is not all low-density residential. It is a wonderful example of low-density residential in a historically planned community on a commercial corridor that is Eastern Avenue. This is the tail end of the commercial functions of the Alger Heights Business District, which is probably one of the most enviable commercial districts in the city. So we're really excited to be the owner. We have no way, way of paying for the development, and we're going to present to you in July, but it does have a unique blend of uses, so we're happy that the zoning's going to happen.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Prove it.
Anyone else on this case? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any follow-up questions or discussion?
I first saw this site, and not knowing anything about ICCF, nor saying that I support what is going to be provided in July, I thought, here's some nice new housing property. And as we talk about all the time, we certainly need more housing and affordable housing in this town.
Yeah, I mean, as it relates to what we have in front of us, this seems just a pretty straightforward procedural thing that we need to take care of, and I'm willing to make a motion.
All right, great, go ahead.
All right. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning of 2550 Eastern Avenue, Southeast, from SDNOS Special District's Neighborhood Office Service, with a conditional rezoning agreement to MCNLDR Mid-Century, Mid-20th Century Neighborhood Low Density Residential Zone District for the following reasons. The proposed zone district will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the future land use map, because the property, property was originally zoned MCNLDR, consistent with the zoning of the surrounding properties. Although the future land use map of the city's 2002 master plan designates this area as institutional, this reflects the property's previous school use and current improvements on the property. The proposed zone district will further the themes and objectives of the master plan, as well as any relevant adopted area-specific plans, because redevelopment of the property or reuse of the school building for residential purposes would be supported by Section 10.7, school reuse in a pre-World War II neighborhood context. The property to be rezoned can reasonably accommodate the requirements of the proposed zone district, because the property is two acres, which can support the range of housing types, densities, and uses permitted in the zone district. The proposed zone, this, zone district designation is compatible with the existing zone districts in the neighborhood, because the proposed zone district is consistent with the zone district of surrounding properties. The physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features of the property to be rezoned are compatible with the full range of uses in the proposed zone district, because there are no apparent environmental features on the property that would inhibit the full range of uses of the property if rezoned. And the proposed zone district or neighborhood classification will not be detrimental to the financial stability and economic welfare of the city, because the proposed zone change may encourage future utilization of the subject property, as there is not intent to develop the property as previously proposed, and the existing conditional rezoning agreement is now void. Support.
All right, we have a motion in support. Carol, do you have, who got that? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the motion passes. I will open up the public comment portion of the meeting. If you're here today and have anything to share with us, you may come forward and share your thoughts. All right, to close the public comment, any other business or fun facts for the day? No? All right, then we're adjourned.